Buddy, you guys ready?
Ready.
Good evening. At six o'clock, I want to welcome everybody to the Lomita Planning Commission meeting. It's Monday, October 10th, and what we'd like to do is start off with a flag salute. So if my trustee vice chair could lead us in a flag salute.
I'm sure will. Thank you. Everyone, please face it. Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's true in public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will welcome everybody. Madam clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Here.
Commissioner Santos? Commissioner Santos, I I don't see, we can see him. I'm not showing. He's, he's here.
So let's not do that while he's driving.
Right. Commissioners? Commissioner Steinbach?
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Stevens? Commissioner Thompson? Okay, we're going to note the absence of Commissioner Thompson. Vice Chair Graff?
Here.
And Chair Camerata?
Here.
Okay. Item number two, oral communications. Persons wishing to address the planning commission on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time, please provide your name and address for the record in order to conduct a timely meeting. A five-minute time limit has been established. Madam clerk, have you received any comments regarding any items not on tonight's agenda?
I have not.
Okay, and is there anyone in the room wishing to comment on any of the items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing nobody, I will say no. So moving on, item three, consent agenda. Approval of the July 11, 2022 minutes. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minutes, please? So move. Okay, Mr. Graff, there's going to be a motion. Anybody have a second?
I'll second.
Brenda's a second. Okay, all in favor of those, we'll do it through a roll call. Madam clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on that?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos? Oh, we lost Commissioner Santos. And Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
We're noting the absence this evening of Commissioner Thompson. Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes.
All right. That's approved. Five zero, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Public hearings, we have two items. We have item number four and item number five, and I believe that item four is going to be pulled from tonight's agenda and postponed until the next meeting.
It'll be opened and continued.
Is that what I understand? So the item will be opened and continued until the November meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's that, okay. So moving right along, item number five.
Yeah, Chairman, just to be clear for the record, so we are opening the public hearing. We will continue the public hearing to the first meeting in November, and that date is the 14th, November 14th.
Yes.
So purposes of the public hearing, that way we do not need to be noticed this item.
Okay.
We'll be able to continue until November.
Okay. So we'll open up the public hearing, and since there's no speakers or action on that, then we can close the public hearing and move on, correct?
Well, you don't close the public hearing.
We'll continue, continue until 14th.
So without objection, you continue.
Okay.
And then we have to vote. We get to vote.
You can formally vote if you'd like.
Okay, so why don't we do a vote to formally continue it to the November 14th meeting? So madam clerk, can you do a roll call on that?
Sure, would, would we like to get a motion in a second, then, if we'll do a vote?
Sure, can I get a motion to continue item four till the November meeting? November 14th, 2022, planning commission meeting.
So move, second.
I'll second.
Now, madam clerk, if you can do a roll call on that.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos? Still missing, okay. And Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson is absent this evening. Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes.
All right, that's five zero.
Okay, great. Okay, item number five. This is conditional use permit number 321. Request to allow an existing 6,214 square foot restaurant located at 2065 Palace Forty's Drive North in the commercial plan development, which is a CPD zone to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption on the premises. Project is categorically, categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. The applicant is Luma Space, specifically Gloria Lee, and the item is being presented by associate planner Laura McMoran.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, Commission. Tonight, we do have an application to serve beer and wine at an restaurant location, at 265 Palace Forty's Drive. This is a former restaurant. It's restaurant called Twinkle Twinkle. The applicant has redone it. This zoning is, as I said, it's CPD, and this zone adheres to the commercial general regulations, and it is consistent with the general plan. The site has, it's a very large site, it has two freestanding multi-tenant buildings. There's over 400 feet of frontage on PV Drive North. Off of PV Drive North, it has two, two-way driveways. There is also a third off of Rolling Hills Vista. The site in total has 211 shared parking stalls throughout, evenly dispersed throughout the site. There is a masonry wall. It was built with development and approved as is, but this unit again is, is very far away from that wall condition. There's a separate trash area for this building. Behind, there's two dumpsters in that trash area, and it's deemed suitable. So Luma Space, the kids cafe, is staff is recommending hours of 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's going to be open from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I spoke with the applicant about having alcohol service end an hour before closing. This is a concept where there may be only one driver, adult driver. Honey, and so we think it's prudent to push the last service time to 7:00 p.m. You know, comparatively, there aren't a lot of light products. Chuck E. Cheese is probably the closest, and they also have alcohol service. And for Lomita, you know, we have not too far away, like full-service entertainment-style restaurant called Shijuan Chinese Food. And again, the hours that are recommended are certainly within the normal times that we see. This is an example of, or this is the first floor floor plan. And the gray areas are areas that have there's a second floor space here, too, but I didn't show that. There is a full working kitchen. There are bathrooms with multiple modes. It's a large space, it's over 6,000 square feet. And the applicant has plans in with building and safety for renovation. And so we can ask her about her progress after the presentation. So staff spoke with the sheriff's representatives, and they were not concerned at all with the recommended hours. They fall within normal meal times. You know, we are just kind of focusing in on any sort of incidents that would be connected possibly with alcohol consumption. And so, you know, we have kind of a baseline to see in the future going forward if there's any adjustments that need to be made. As a condition of approval, we are recommending that there be an exterior security camera added so that we can identify if need be anything to help law enforcement. So with regard to our findings, restaurants serving beer and wine, they are allowed with a CUP in the CPD zone. The project is consistent with the general plan as elaborated in the staff report resolution. You know, the site and the building's design are orientative towards PV Drive North, and they're compatible with existing and future land uses. The site can accommodate, does accommodate, all the necessary development features. Sensitive use findings. It has been past practice and staying consistent that staff identifies residential uses and houses of worship as sensitive, regardless of really how connected they are to the site. The residential uses just touch on the 300-foot radius, as does Rolling Hills Covenant Church. But then because of the size of PV Drive North, the width of it, and also the orientation of this restaurant space, we don't see that there's going to be any conflict between the two. And there's never been complaints about the former use or other alcohol uses that we could find that were once at that shopping center area. So those findings are that onsite consumption of beer and wine at a bona fide eating establishment should not around mealtime should not affect public safety. That restaurants bring vitality to an area. And the shopping center does have a few number of vacancies presently. And restaurants serving beer and wine were previously served at the shopping center without any complaints that we could find on file from neighboring uses. So it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission adopts a resolution approving CUP number 321 with all the conditions and any hours previously mentioned. Are there any questions?
Well, first of all, thank you for the report, Laura. So yes, are there any questions? Why don't we start off with Vice Chair Graff?
Yeah, I'm just curious, and I won't take your research that you've done. That he's, that, no, I'm sorry, Steve is. I'll let him address that. What type of how can you equate a regular restaurant, Sashwan Cafe, to something like a children's place with, with all of this stuff? How, how is that relatable to each other? I understand Chuck E. Cheese, but I'll let him address that.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Well, it's really more about the hours that Lomita feels are the more for its beer and wine service.
Okay.
And it's putting that in context, and so it's not an outlier what she's asking for.
Okay, so I understand, okay. So you're relating that to hours of operation or service rather than the primary purpose of the building, in my opinion. So the only thing that, that I would say that if this does go forward, I would like to see it tightened up with regard to the security cameras and stuff. That I understand that there's a front and a back to the building, and that there should be sufficient camera coverage to cover the entire front and the entire back. And also, I know it says the equipment shall be satisfaction of the community development director. I'd like to also see it included in there, how long it has to be safe for a period, for a period. And I don't know what is typical for businesses, but you know, with everything that's going on right now in this crazy world, I think that we need to do the utmost that we can to protect the restaurant, the people, and, and the citizens that are there, and especially if there's children there. So we need to make sure that we have sufficient coverage. I don't know if they have security inside the building or not. But I think that we need to make sure that this is very, quite specific, rather than just to the satisfaction of the director of development. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dever, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do we know if we have Commissioner Santos back up?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, Commissioner Santos, welcome back from the dark side.
Sorry about that.
Okay, Commissioner Steinbach, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens, any comments or questions?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Thompson is not here. So my comment was in looking at the staff reported mention Chuck E. Cheese, and so I thought to myself, hmm, I don't know, the last time I was in Chuck E. Cheese was probably 30 years ago, but I didn't realize they had alcohol and beer in there. So I did a little research, and I found out that Chuck E. Cheese, as of September 10th, has suspended all sale of alcohol for the next 120 days in all of their restaurants.
That's interesting.
And furthermore, it said on the website that according to a company representative, the restaurant does not currently sell nor will it in the future sell wine or alcohol. I don't know what happened, it didn't go into details, but I have a concern about this particular establishment with the word kids in it, because I just don't know if alcohol and kids mix, especially in a environment as this. Now, I'm willing to hear from the applicant, because I know she's here, so that's my concern, that's my comment. And so that's all I have to say at this point. So if the applicant is present, which I believe she is, if you would like to speak, you have five minutes at the podium. If you can stand at the podium and address the commission, state your name and address for the record for our for our for our minutes, thank you.
Sure. My name is Gloria Lee, and I'm the owner of Luma Space, and
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no. And I'm the owner of Luma Space. Um, so I think it's been almost eight months since we started this process of lease negotiation and letting the community know that we're trying to open this kid's space. And after Twinkle Twinkle closed down, a lot of the parents were looking forward to the space reopening. So we have a really supportive community, a community that really is rallying for us to open as soon as possible. So when I first reached out to the parents and I asked them, what would you like to see? And a lot of them said, you know, great food, a great place space for the kids, some classes, and a place for us to celebrate, because after COVID, they could no longer have any more celebrations. So a lot of the parents that couldn't celebrate the second or their 30th, or they really wanted to do a big celebration on their fifth, fourth, or fifth birthday party. So as of right now, since we started our social media accounts, it's only been about three months, and I have about 80 requests for birthday parties. And that's without us releasing information about the about our packages or anything like that. So I'm expecting really this place to be a, a community space for all of South Bay. So I'm really excited, and both Laura, Tony from the LA Building Department, they're all excited as well. I would say that right now, we have submitted a third revision of our building permits. And once that gets approved, then we'll have the final AOK to start the construction. Um, so a lot of the parents, in addition to everything that I said, they really did want to, because everybody wants to celebrate. They want to have events there, they want to have the birthday parties there, they were hoping that we can sell alcohol. And initially, I said, you know, I would rather not sell alcohol, at least not for liquor. I'm not a drinker myself, so I did not want to sell any of hard liquor. But beer and wine, we were planning to host events such as wine and paint nights for parents, especially moms. They wanted to have a place after the kids sleep, they want to come in and paint and have wine. And initially, if I'm being 100% honest, a lot of businesses just do it, and they don't alert anybody that they are doing that process, they have the parents bring it from home. I, I would rather go through the permit process and let the everybody know, all the residents, what it is that we're doing, and do it in a safe environment. In addition to that, if I can go back to the cameras, so currently, they have already installed 12 cameras indoors. My plan is to increase that to 20. So ADT has already come out and done a quote, a very expensive quote like that, like close to $10,000. But to me, safety is number one, so we are going to have them do that, as well as the outdoor cameras. So all of the points are valid there. In addition to that, I know we talked a little bit about Chuck E. Cheese and their beer and wine servings. I wasn't aware that they stopped of serving it, because I've been there not too long ago, and they were still serving, so it must have just happened not too long ago. But there's also Dave and Buster. Dave and Buster also has the same concept. There is also, um, like round table, they have a kids' area with arcade, and then they still serve with pizza and beer. There's also another place in Illinois called Social Playhouse, and they have this concept, and they actually do serve hard liquor, which I am not going to go in that direction ever. But again, my idea was, I really wanted the parents to celebrate, and I wanted them to relax a little bit, not too much. But have fun and really have this be a community space. Um, I believe there's more restaurants that I'm kind of like forgetting about Shakey's. Shakey's also on PCH and Hawthorne, they also have beer and wine servings. There's also, by the airport, there's a restaurant there where the kids can play in the playground, and the parents will enjoy food and beer and wine as well, and I believe for liquor, too. So I feel like at the end of the day, parents do want to enjoy. So we're also going to have a coffee shop, so I want them to enjoy coffee in the morning, to have a celebration, enjoy beer and wine, just to wind down for the night. But I do think, as long as, if you guys will approve under a certain condition for me to follow, I do believe that we can do it safely, and I'm always I ran, I was an operations manager for Wells Fargo for a very long time, so I do kind of do things by the book, and everything has to kind of make sense, not the I's and cross the T's. So as long as you guys give me that criteria, what to follow, I'll make sure to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Gloria, for the presentation. I am going to now open up the public hearing, seeing there's no one in the public hearing. Madam clerk, is there still anybody online that has joined us since we started?
No, there's no one else here, thank you.
Okay. So that would be if we've received any other, to know else is online, okay. And there is no one else to speak on this item. So we can close the public hearing? Or do you have a comment? Yes.
And we ask the applicant, because maybe some ideas have been evolving, it sounds like, and if she does have some.
Great, I had a couple more questions now. So before I close the public hearing, can I bring her back up to the
Absolutely, ask the questions before you close.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind coming back up. So I want to address a couple of things that Vice Chair Graff brought up. One was the cameras, you mentioned there's currently 12 in the facility, and you want to increase that to 20 indoors. I didn't recall how many were outdoor cameras?
So currently, she didn't have any, or at least that I'm not aware of, but we are going to add it outdoors.
Okay, so I would say that'd be something that I'd want to be added as another condition for exterior cameras, so we can add that. The next question in relation to the cameras is who monitors the cameras now or currently, or what's the plan for monitoring? So in other words, do you have them all in a room, you've got somebody sitting in the room watching all these cameras, or what's the plan?
So the plan is, yes, we will have like a TV with all the smaller monitors in the kitchen area and in the office. We also have access on our phones. And the, there will be four cameras that's actually inside the playground where the kids are playing, and those will actually be outside of like the play space, so that the other parents can also see what's happening inside.
Okay. Okay, that seems to me, if you've got people in the kitchen busy and nobody's sitting in front of the cameras, it'd be a little bit challenging if something happens.
Excuse me, are you, are they being recorded?
Yes.
For how long are the recordings kept for?
I don't want to state the wrong length, but under my, if I, maybe I shouldn't say it, but whatever it is that I booked, it was the most expensive package. There's like motion sensors, there's like everything that you can think of, all the bells and whistles through ADT. I had a lot of different companies come out and give me estimates that were way cheaper, but I chose to go with ADT, which is a trustworthy and reliable company. And so I can get back to you on that, but whatever it was the longest term, that's how long we're going to have to record for.
So going back to the cameras, four on the outside, is that what you said? You said you want to do four cameras on the outside, or you didn't know at the time?
We haven't like specified on the outdoor cameras yet. So whichever direction you like for us to go, we can. They come out and they do a whole survey, and so we haven't done that part on the exterior yet.
So perhaps maybe that survey, come back to Laura, and you guys can go through that, which is one of my concerns. The next question is, considering, again, alcohol, kids in the same place, and you referred back to Dave and Buster's, I know about a year ago, there was an incident, Dave and Buster's. I believe there were gunshots, and I believe that there were gang members involved
Oh, wow.
at the Delamo Mall, and that was at Dave and Buster's. So just to keep that in mind, no matter what happens, when you mix alcohol and people, it just seems like it goes sideways. So were there plans, or are there plans to have security present at your location? In other words, a security guard? Because I think that might be another condition we put on this thing, especially if it's you know, an issue of security.
So currently, I do not, I did not have any plans to have a security guard there. That thought crossed my head a few times, my mind a few times. But the, one of the biggest reasons why I decided not to go with that is because I feel like that adds another sense of worry. I feel like as a parent, if I'm walking in and I see a security guard there, rather than giving me that sense of that everything's okay because that person's there, I feel like that person was placed there for a reason. So I would, me personally, I would not go to an establishment that had a security guard that's just always there. It's almost like, uh, like almost as if it's being treated as a bar versus a restaurant. So same thing, like I mentioned, when Chuck E. Cheese did have their alcohol servings or the airport restaurant establishment out there, they also don't have the security guards, and I feel like it could be for that reason. The cost is not that big of a deal for me, it's more of, I don't want to add more worry to the parents that there's a reason why there's a security guard there.
Well, security guards in today's world are probably much more needed than you would think, and especially with everything that goes on. I mean, most restaurants are bars, and these bars have a bouncer. And a lot of establishments are starting to bring more and more security guards in. And given the climate of today's, you know, business environment with a lot of these, you know, smash and grab robberies and just incidents of violence, I think a security guard would only enhance your ability to prove to the parents that you're serious about not only the security of the environment, but of the kids, too, because, you know, kids are kids, and that's the whole thing, is to keep them safe. So that's the two things that I had as rebuttal. Is there any other questions from commissioners, and I'll start back off with Vice Chair Graff?
Yeah, on the security guard issue, I have been to several restaurants recently, and in fact, the last one, Teddy Hana's, they have two security guards there all the time, and that's just the meeting restaurant. The hours of, what are, what are your planned hours of operation, not for alcohol sales, but hours of operation?
Nine till eight.
Nine till eight. So you're saying that, you know, they come in for coffee and everything before, they don't come in and have brandy with their coffee? You mentioned special events and things, and things like that. Um, you mentioned special events and things and things like that. Um where the moms, you said, could come and uh have a glass of wine and paint and stuff like that. Would those be after hour events?
So Laura and I had talked about that, whether we would do it with the kids there or without the kids there. So my plan is if we're my idea was without the kids, but if we must have during the current business hours and we can totally do it during that time, I would still probably not have the kids there because I don't think the moms can drink wine, paint and have the kids there.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand, I understand. So um with that then, would, that would be, would there be a requirement to have a uh special permit for her to do that? For example, if it's beyond her normal business hours or outside of the allowable uh beer and wine hours, uh, does she have to have a special permit to be able to do that?
She would have to have a special, she could have a, apply for a special event permit if this was intermittent. Or alternatively, we could revisit, I mean, a seven o'clock close or last call is very early, right? I mean, this is, it's not a, we're not discussing, you know, we're talking softer drinks, do not hard alcohol. Um, and we could extend, but
Doesn't matter.
It it matters because it's, it's the, it's the proportion of um risk to the mitigating circumstances.
I understand, but it's still alcohol and that's controlled by the agency.
Yeah, and we have not put on a lot of owner, a lot of high bar conditions. We feel like security cameras are sufficient, especially given the limited parameters of what, you know, is being asked for, um, meaning only the beer and wine and the hours of operation. We're not anticipating and nor did the sheriff's department anticipate any real significant issues with this, otherwise they would have addressed, addressed it with us. Um
Yeah, I think just to add to that, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, yeah, this is not a location that's known to be a hotbed for bars and other types of activities. It would be unruly. So given that the applicant is suggesting that she might want to expand her business opportunities to also be able to provide for parents and their friends, their adult friends. Um, I don't see that needing a special permit. I think that can be within the parameters of a standard restaurant EDC license. So I would simply suggest that rather than limiting it to seven PM, if she's looking to operate till eight PM, I think that would be reasonable to allow for the alcohol sales to eight PM.
No, but the point that I was making is she indicated that it would be for or she wanted to have it for the moms to be able to have some wine and paint. And to me, if she's open till, that would, that and what she, the indication that I got that it would be outside, cause she called it a special event, would be outside of normal operating hell.
I think we could, we could ask the applicant to clarify her hours. I think what she is indicating is that this, this type of operation typically has booked parties. So whether it's for children or whether it's for the adults, you know, it's, it's a special event from that perspective because it's not necessarily a children's party, it's an adult, right? So go ahead.
So thank you for that. Yes, so actually initially we're going to do it on a Friday, but recently I may have changed, may change it to Thursday instead, but um every Thursday, every single Thursday, so fifty-two times a year, we're uh closing down for the play space area. We still have a full service restaurant, we have everything, but those nights are for um like special events. So one of them, for example, will be the sip and paint night. The other night would be a Lego building event. The third night would be for older kids, so kids that uh our space is really for six months and seven year old. But I always felt that uh some of the pre-teens out there, they don't have a space to go. Uh, and I feel like that leads them into some not good areas, so I, I really wanted them to come in um and have a place for them all to meet. The other one was a movie night, so we would close the play space area down, so they don't uh go into the play space, but we're still like all together, we're still eating, there's gonna be pizza and all of that. Um, another night would be, uh, there's a charity uh that I really like, which they build um bicycles, uh, so we bring all the equipment and we put it together and then we donate that bicycle. So all those events would be hosted out of the fifty-two. I have like a list that just keeps going down and down and down on my Excel sheet. But it's for special events, so it's not necessarily, so you are correct, those, every event that I have placed or planned, they're within our opening hours, cause I have kids as well, but um they will be shut down for the the entire play area usage. It'll be a special event instead. That's what I meant, a special event. It's not that we would be there until ten, eleven at night.
Okay.
It's uh within that time.
Okay, right. Um, yeah, I, and I think with regard to the cameras and everything, I think that as long as it's specified that there are cameras outside, front and rear.
Right.
Front and rear and, and what she said, the, the package she's after on the ADT, uh, I think leaving it up to the Director of Community and Economic Development would be fine because they're gonna, at least they're gonna have it at heart on how long
Yeah, we'll see the plan.
Yeah, how long um the recordings are kept for? And my, my thing there is just that it's sufficient, so if something happens and it's the next day before the sheriff's department can get there, it's still recorded so that they've got something to look at. So it's not just there for an hour and gone, or that it's a, it's a continuous, continuous date thing. That's all I, so if that's
Yeah, I think that's, that's understood because normally when you have a law enforcement issue, it's within hours.
Right, right, right.
And if it's a complaint from a parent, you know, my son got hit by somebody else's son. Um, often it's that day or it's the next day, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and or if there's anything, anything that uh that is there. You know, I, understanding your location, one of my concerns, or excuse me, before giving extra understanding to your location was a concern of mom having too many glasses of wine with her kids there and driving home. Um, and not saying that everybody is that intelligent. Uh, I think your location is not a bad, too bad of a location to be doing, having, having that effort, so that's all I have.
Okay, before we go on, I do want to say just for your own benefit, cause we have cameras at some of the buildings that we manage. They're usually time of recording are either seven days or thirty days. Typical, it's a thirty day cycle, but eh, again, ADT can tell you what their plan is, so I just want to make that one comment. Um, and then I want to go back real quick to what I said about the Chuck E. Cheese thing. I do recall that there's another establishment not too far around the corner from there, but Lampost Pizza, which is right over here off of Rolling Hills Road. They have pizza, they have beer, they have wine, they have TVs, they have kids, they have Little League, they have baseball, you know, teams that come through. I don't recall any problems there, so I'm just saying that's a little plus in your corner, just to give you that.
Rizzle, rizzle.
Uh, rizzle is another one, so just saying. So I just think when there's a kid's name in a, in, 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 in the name of a business and you put the that, that, that's the thing that kind of, you know. But be that as it may. Okay, so let's move on. Um, Commissioner Dever, any, any more comments or questions? Annika, you there?
I'm here. No, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Santos?
Uh, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Steinbach?
Well, I had a question and I should have written it down on a post here because now it escapes me. Um but I do have comments before we vote.
Okay, so now is the perfect time. Comments or questions?
Is it still me or?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, so um, and I, I'm gonna piggyback on what you just said um about citing all the different places that are like this. I mean, virtually every single pizza parlor. I, I mean, it'd be really, it'd be easier counting the number of places that don't cater to families that have beer and wine. I just remembered my question. Um, and this is for the applicant. It is, is, are guests allowed to bring in their own alcohol?
No.
Okay, so then that helps me with my point. If some places, um and I don't want to name them, cause I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but there are places where adults come and have things to do or kids have parties or whatever, and you're allowed to bring in your own beer and wine and food. Excuse me, not uncommon. Um, but that's hard to control, so if you're serving it, if you're selling it there, then it's a whole lot easier to control and cut somebody off if, if it got to that point. My, my biggest concern here is the, the dialogue that I've heard so far and in reading the, the conditions and the special conditions is that staff hasn't um, put any special conditions on dictating outside cameras, inside cameras, you know, all the security guard and all that kind of stuff. Um, and that seems as though we're going after this particular business because it has the kids title in there. And quite frankly, um, the special conditions say that this establishment has to be operated as a bona fide public eating place. So this is a restaurant that has or, or eating place, whatever you want to call it, that has entertainment things for kids or for whoever's attending. Um, so while I think security is great and I, and I, I see the need for it, I, I think that the applicant has chosen to put a lot of um, of those elements in this presentation, but I'm uncomfortable tacking a whole lot of conditions, security conditions on this particular business that we don't on other businesses in the city that are just like it. And when I say just like it, family oriented um and food and beer and wine. So I'm really uncomfortable with that. And to be honest with you, if there's a motion uh made to add those conditions that you have been talking about, I will not be voting for.
And thank you, Bob. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, just to piggyback on what you just said, I believe these were all, at least in my knowledge, discussion items. I don't think we've actually formally made a motion to include any additional special conditions with regards to the cameras or security guard or any of that. Um, they were just more discussion in my opinion.
Well, I, I'm, I, okay, but when you're an applicant and you're trying to get something approved and the chair and vice chair start making a bunch of um suggestions, they, it seems as though it's implied that that would get them an approval and I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Okay, well, let me make you comfortable. Again, it was a discussion item. Um, I'm concerned about the safety of kids and I know that there's other establishments that have, that are all in that same league that have alcohol with kids. And we, I'm just asking the question because it's before us, so that's really all I'm coming at. Okay, so with that being said, uh, Commissioner Stevens, any more comments or questions for the applicant?
I do. Um, I just went for clarification. This, this is a family space advertised as a family space for sports banquets, birthday parties. It has a restaurant at a place where while you're eating, your kids have something to do. I mean, basically, kind of like twinkle, twinkle.
Yes.
Okay, um, and, and everybody's throwing out Chuck E. Cheese and Dave and Buster's and all this kind of stuff. Those tend to be in locations where people take their kids older than seven and just say, go. And they sit in the bar section and their kids just run rampant. And there's a lot of problems when they're drinking and then the kids get in a fight and I get all that. But having raised my kids at pizza parter, drinking beer after everything that's going on and going to wine and painting and, and such like that, I think I, I think the overall concept of it is really good. I did in here, and I don't know where it is, he's something about where security cameras was, was in there. And, and that location is not a real high bar traffic area. Um, most of the time after eight o'clock, it's completely dead up there. And so I just wanted to clarify, and, and it, that was what you're promoting it as is a family center with a few extra things for older kids and people that want to get away from their kids for
Exactly, if, if I can just add a little bit to that too. Um, all of our website, social media and everything, we are categorized as a premium uh like how do I say, like a restaurant and attraction. So we do, our price point is higher than uh, most other indoor playgrounds out there. Um, and everything that I do, I just like you said, everything's kind of calculated and it's to do it safely is just, just that one hour, just that one line, just to just celebrate and have a good time. It's not, to be honest with you, I haven't mentioned to anybody that we are serving uh the beer and wine. This is, I just submitted and it's just between me and Laura. That's uh the only two people that know about it because I really did want to go through this process. And just like Bob mentioned earlier too, he said, oh, would you allow people to bring it in? And I'm glad that he made that point because I know of a lot of indoor playgrounds that do allow it for parties. And I did not want to be going in that route. I do want everything to be on the receipt for me to know exactly how much and when to stop serving. So I appreciate that from being made there.
Okay, well, I will circle back and see if anybody has any last minute comments or questions. So I'm gonna do it one more time through so we're clear on everything. Commissioner Graff?
Yes, um, Gloria, I just want to um express to you that the way that you explain it to us is my, in my view uh, much of what you're trying to accomplish and what you're trying to do much different than Dave and Buster's or Chuck E. Cheese.
Yes.
And it was good that you were here because now I understand that. And I feel, I feel much better.
I'm glad.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, last comment question. Uh, Commissioner Dever, anything?
Um, no, thank you.
Commissioner Santos?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Commissioner Steinbach, anything last comment or question?
No.
Hey, Commissioner Stevens?
No, I'm good.
And I will also say one final thing. The conditions of approval do include a couple of items in here that we've gone through kind of in detail tonight. One was about the fact that it's operated as a bona fide public eating place, which is item number fourteen. Uh, the uh, security camera issues is identified in number seventeen. And uh, there's one more item, number nineteen, about no advertising on the window. So now hearing everything that you said and answering everything that I had as concerns and questions, I am completely and a hundred percent convinced that your plan is a good plan going forward. And with that, I would like to close. You have one more?
I got, I'm sorry, I, I've got one more. Uh, it was brought up, it was brought up by um, Cherry, the fact of possibly changing the hours of operation to accommodate her uh mom painting efforts, or, or something similar, something similar to that.
It could be a dad painting too. That would be condition thirteen.
Right, right. Um, and, and I, I just wanted to to know or try to understand what uh your thoughts were on how we could, how we could accommodate what she has indicated to us, rather than that seven PM when she's open till eight.
Right.
Or, or if she's got a group there and wants to extend it an hour, or, I mean, I don't know how you can cover that. But, but the flex, give some type of flexibility to.
And I guess a question to the applicant, so you're, even with your paint nights and your other types of special events, you're still intending to close at eight o'clock?
That's my thought.
Okay, and you don't think that you'll ever need to have past eight o'clock?
Um, at the moment, no, but let's just say, because I'm not open yet, I'm not sure what kind of request. Yeah, so for example, let's say somebody, I don't know what can happen after eight, but I'm not sure. So I, for now, the answer is no, I don't have any. I'm not sure. So I, for now, the answer is no, I don't have any plans, but I, I'm unsure if I'll get any requests later.
Okay, what I would recommend to the commission is provide some flexibility because your work is here in the league that does not provide an easy way to modify conditions. It ends up being very expensive. So it's better to anticipate potential changes so that we don't have problems in the future. So the, um, major promotion could suggest that we amend condition number thirteen to allow for normal operating hours to end at eight PM for the alcohol beverage sales. And if there is a special event that they can make a request to the community development director to allow for an extended time to nine PM on a case-by-case basis.
Now, would that be a, uh, an event permit?
No, it does not need to be a special event for that. It's simply advising that they're doing something. And if it's clearly within the normal realm of a restaurant, uh, they're doing a paint night.
Yeah.
You know, going to nine o'clock's not unusual. If they're doing a fundraiser, right? I mean, that would also not be unusual. So nine PM, I don't even have a problem with the, the normal hours of operation even going to nine PM. So the choice for the condition would be simply to amend this condition to go to nine PM, and they would always be able to do that. Or if you feel that you want to limit it to eight PM, say that the alcohol beverage sales would end at eight PM unless a prior approval is obtained from the community development director. Right, and it's, in such case, it would go to nine PM.
She's so good with nine.
She is.
Too many years of experience.
Yeah.
A little long in the teeth.
With, with that being said, and I think that's a, that's an excellent suggestion, I want to run this by everybody real quick before we take, uh, uh, one more, you know, roll. One roll, roll call on it. So Commissioner Graff, are you okay with that idea?
Uh, with what was just presented by.
Presented by Sherry, okay. Commissioner Dever?
Yes, that's fine.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, and I am as well. So with that, uh, I thank you for your time and, uh, appreciate your candid answers. And, uh, hope we didn't scare you off. But I think we, uh, I think we all understand fully a lot more than we did prior, which is good, which is why you come before us. So with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. And if there's no more comments or questions or any more discussion on it, I'd like to get a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion that we approve conditionally, this permit seven, excuse me, three twenty-one with general condition, number thirteen modified to allow, um, for beer and wine sales from eleven AM to nine PM.
Great.
Nine, because that doesn't require a spatial permit.
Okay, I just want to make sure you're getting.
If they want to run over by accident.
Extended to two hours to make it kind of a safe.
A safe, yeah.
Safe zone, okay. Safe time zone, okay. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that?
What can?
Second.
I think Commissioner Santos said second.
Commissioner Santos, is there a second?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. And with that, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Madam, could you please go ahead and call roll call, please?
Sure, can I get, um, clarity on that, um, on the motion again? We're, we're, um, expanding or extending the closing time or just allowing for the flexibility?
Closing time, what it is, is flexibility in special conditions. Uh, revising the beer and wine set period of sale from eleven AM to seven PM, changing it to eleven AM to nine PM.
A simple change.
Okay, go. All right, um. Okay, so Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
And, uh, Commissioner Thompson's absent, Vice Chair Graff? And Chair Camerata. Okay, that's proof five zero, and I'd like to, um, introduce Natalie Camarena. She is the Assistant City Attorney. I apologize, I did not introduce you earlier. She's on the Zoom call this evening and I just did not want you to think that, um, you know, that we didn't know that you're here and appreciate that you're here with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all for having me, and it's okay, Linda, I appreciate it.
I think the vote was six, zero, not five, zero.
Absolutely right, absolutely right. Santos was here for this one, so yes, this is, uh, six, zero, not five, zero. I apologize, I was going on autopilot on that. Thank you.
Gloria, thank you very much. Send us an invitation when you're ready to open. Hand open. Thank you.
Yeah, almost done.
Okay, so with that being said, I believe we are, uh, ready for Schedule Matter, which is item number six, which is a review of the twenty twenty-two legislative cycle summary provided by the League of California Cities. Uh, presentation is going to be made by Natalie Camarino?
No, Ashley, it's not Natalie, it's me.
Oh. Why is she up on the screen? Oh, I thought maybe she was gonna make the presentation, okay. I got you. Okay, all right, so let's strike that. We haven't heard anything from her.
Oh, so far, right. And actually, we're not gonna make a presentation tonight. I simply wanted to bring this to the commission's awareness. Um, as with past years, we have a legislature that's been doing lots of new legislation, some of which is applying to housing. So we simply wanted you to be, um, aware of the League of California City's summary of the legislation. We will certainly do more evaluation. We will bring it back to you in terms of any ordinance amendments that may be necessary. Uh, but primarily from a housing perspective, there is one new bill that is primarily pertaining to mixed use and affordable housing. But it's not as simple as it sounds. It does allow for a, uh, by right, a permitted use. But you have to have all sorts of qualifiers in terms of the labor agreements and kind of, you know, prevailing wage and all of that. So we're, we're not necessarily sure that it's going to be much of an issue for the media. But again, it's just one of those things that we're constantly seeing in terms of changes. There is also one change to the ADU law which deals with the hate of baby use and also the presence of the gendered approach within the front yard. The commission will remember, we just amended the ordinance and we still are obligated to send it to the state for review. So our intent is to send it to the state, see if they have any further changes. They may not love our ordinance.
Right.
And if so, we will come back and make the changes necessary for the, the new legislation, as well as any other tweaks required by the HCD.
That's SB ninety, eight ninety-seven, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's all we have to say.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Cherry?
Uh, the only thing that I noticed in there that I was talking to Ryan about it earlier is that it looks like, he says, it depends on how it actually become, is written, but it looks like with regard to parking, uh, we may have a little bit of, maybe fresh air to breathe depending on how it's written, because it gives us a little bit more flexibility because of being close to mass transit and stuff like that.
That's AB two oh nine seven.
So, uh, it looks like we may have a possibility there, because I think there isn't anybody in Little Maida that doesn't worry about parking.
Yes.
So, okay.
Okay. Well, I trust everyone's had a chance to look at those over, so we'll do, uh, we'll do no further on that. Thank you, Sherry. Uh, okay, item number seven, communication regarding city council actions. Nothing. Okay, and, uh, item number eight, the project status update.
The only ones to, um, to comment on is that the cream cam is well under construction. You've probably seen them, they jump off their roof. I mean, they're doing a lot more than we expected.
Right.
Rebuilding the whole place?
Yeah, which is, which is good. Um, but in terms of the downtown area, we are expecting a couple of additional restaurants, so the Slip Bar is making progress.
That's the Mexican restaurant?
No, Slip Bar is the one right across the street from Burton Daylight.
Next to, uh.
Oh, yeah, right next to Bill and Al.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, so we're hoping that they will come in soon with an application for a facade improvement. Because obviously the front of that restaurant doesn't look very good. Right, and then we are also in discussions with a business owner that is in the same center as Ruzo's. And they're looking to potentially open a Mediterranean restaurant. So the downtown area is starting to get a little bit more livable, which is a good thing.
And I noticed the building on the corner that had the car crash into it.
Oh, yeah.
They're getting a new phone.
Yeah.
Somewhat, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, do you know exactly what they're doing? I know that they've got the glass off, off the ground.
Yeah, they have to make some structural repairs, so that's why you now see a pony wall. And I think they're waiting for their class.
A half wall, half pony wall concrete, then the other half.
It still looks so much better than that wood.
At least you know they're getting it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
How long has it been?
Oh, it's.
They must have had insurance.
Oh, and I think they were just slow.
Yeah.
Had to prod them.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, uh, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, so other matters, item number nine, staff items, any announcements?
Uh, the only announcement is that you do have a new director who will be coming in November.
Oh.
Right, so that's good news. Uh, she comes to us from the city of Palos Verdes Estates.
Oh.
And I think she'll be a good match. So hopefully we'll be able to interview her soon.
I told Ryan, I said, maybe get her to come to the November meeting.
Yeah, there was one other staff change. Uh, so Memphis has recently left us as well, so she's been on for a couple of weeks. She took another position over in Huntington Park. And then also our intern took another position. So Lauren has big shoulders, but don't expect her to carry too much more. She's kind of at breaking capacity.
That's when I saw the posting.
Yeah, so we pulled in for the assistant, and we're most likely going out for an intern once the new director starts. Thank you for the reminder. See, she's already gone, so we forgot about it.
Not, not forgotten.
No, not forgotten.
Item number ten, planning commissioner items. I guess we can start with Vice Chair Graff?
Yeah, I only, I have a question for the planning group. Um, with all the changes that are being made relative to building laws and, you know, and, and all of that stuff that we've been wrestling with, um, there are a lot of items that can be, that used to come to the planning commission that can be approved or don't even have to be approved by the city. Correct?
If on the perspective that things are now becoming ministerial?
Yes.
That is absolutely true.
Right, now, um, I guess, and I'm, what I'm curious about is whether or not there is some way for us, for the commission to be aware of some of those things that are ministerial, that used to come to us that we might be interested in to know something's, something's happening, you, you, you know?
Yeah. We were actually talking about this just the other day, so Lauren and I have conversations about doing a local report that really talks about the number of building permits that are being issued.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it's very difficult for both you as a commission, but also for the city council.
Right.
To know what the growth and development, you know, is within the community. So, um, we'll be looking into that and once your new director starts, that's one of the things that we plan on implementing probably by the beginning of the year.
Yeah, now, I'm, I'm trying to recall, Steve, I don't know if you did, because I think you, maybe Joaquin and Monica, uh, we back when Alicia was here, I guess, before, yeah.
Right.
They had a database that kept track of all, all of the stuff that went on.
We do still have that.
Right, and I was just wondering if, if there's some way, I know that's got a lot more than what we are concerned with. Yeah, if there's a way of, a way of notifying, or in the database, putting a one or a two, or, I'm just saying. Or whether it's, you know, would be interesting to the commission and you could, you know, sort it and print.
No, that, again, we plan on doing that.
Okay, okay, good.
I think I was coming up with a good template, and, um, I guess I I say this internally to staff a lot. I started my career in Illinois. And so a lot of things that the, um, state is doing now is like where we were at in terms of objective things. There was never, it was, things weren't coming to commissions if they were in the municipal code and approved by right. Um, because we had in some ways maybe more or different design standards, especially if you have good ones, your development standards, it becomes redundancy to bring something before a commission that's already compliant with the code. So, uh, I think there will still be things coming to the commission and getting weighing in on those media things versus the more transactional things. So that helps. I'm not like, I'm not as worried because I come from a, a, a different base that operates just well and good.
Okay, okay, that would be wonderful, though.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Dever?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Commissioner Santos?
Just my apologies for logging on a little late. I was on the road and I had some difficulties, but nonetheless.
Technical difficulties overcome. Thank you, Joaquin. Uh, Commissioner Steinbach?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, Commissioner Stevens?
No.
Anything, Brenda, okay. My only comment was going, piggyback on what Mike just said. A year ago, maybe, we used to get that stat before from great, great, and it was a simple Excel spreadsheet. Is it somewhere in the database? That's the easiest one that I could think of, that you don't have to, you know, invent the wheel.
Yeah, that, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, because that was really a nice little clean one. It had either the, you know, the item number, whatever it was, and just a couple of bullet points all the way across. It was nice and simple to understand.
Yeah, I know, I was thinking about some of the things we're not gonna see now that.
But, but yeah, so, like.
Overtime.
Yeah, like, that one was a good thing. It just kind of gave us an overall plan, so, okay. All right, uh, we're down to item number eleven, commissioners to attend the next two city council meetings, Tuesday, November first and Tuesday, November fifteenth. Do I have any takers for the first?
I can do the first.
Okay, Brenda, the first, anything for Tuesday, the fifteenth?
I can do the fifteenth.
Thank you very much, Joaquin. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and, uh, that is the case, then we'll announce the next meeting as November fourteenth, Monday, November fourteenth at six PM. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move that.
So moved?
Second.
You adjourned.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye, everybody. Good evening.
Thank you.